I think everyone is here, yeah.
How are you?
Okay, I was gonna say, don't leave.
(laughing)
All right, let's start this meeting, may we have the roll call, please?
Boyd?
Here.
Goldbeck?
Here.
Halagian?
Here.
Hatwick? McNary? Roper? Simmons?
Here.
All right, next item, item number two, approved, uh, last month's meeting minutes, or April's meeting minutes. Any changes or corrections to the meeting minutes?
Was it here?
Second. Favor?
Aye.
Motion, and me- uh, meeting minutes are approved. On to item number three, approving the agenda, any changes to the agenda necessary?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
The agenda is approved. Items on the consent calendar, no continued matters, on to commission items, letter A, please. Excuse myself for the next two items, okay?
We won't forget you, Paul.
And just a point of clarification, in case anyone was concerned. A we- a majority of the quorum present is allowed to vote on the next two items. Um, if it were a de- historic, um, a local or a national designation, or a, um, a historic district designation, we would actually need a majority of legally allowed positions. So, we'd need four votes, but for these two items, three votes would be sufficient. If there are only two votes, then it, it won't pass. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, take that back, two votes would pass. Cause we're still, or no, 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 I apologize, a majority of the quorum, so we need a majority of the quorum, so three votes would be required.
So in this case, it must be unanimous?
Yeah, we need un- unanimity for the next two items to pass.
And the first item is an action item, but the second is a discussion. Okay. Clear as mud? The application PZ seventeen nine zero 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 six four, for the rehabilitation of the State Center Warehouse, was initially reviewed and approved by the Commission on December nineteenth, two thousand sixteen. Revised plans were submitted by the property owner due to a recent requirement from the Department of Public Works to have an ADA accessible path with a minimum width of four feet along the east side of Enio Street, between our street and the promenade parking lot. Here are existing conditions along this segment of Enio. The revised plans for the side north elevation of the building facing Enio Street entail demolition of the dock and installation of a sidewalk, street trees, and windows at basement level. Upon initial review, staff finds that the new construction as proposed does comply with the Purpose and Facade Design Development Standards as put forth in the Development Code. However, staff finds that the potential loss of a prominent character-defining feature along a street-facing elevation of this historic resource is the primary concern as it would diminish the historic tank- integrity of the property. Additionally, it would not be in accordance with Standards nine and ten of the Secretary of the Interior Standards for Rehabilitation. Alternatives to removing the dock completely have been discussed among staff and with the owner and architect, and were presented to the Commission at the regularly scheduled meeting for further discussion on April twenty-second, two thousand nineteen. This discussion did not clearly result in any potential alternatives gaining traction for further consideration. According to the U.S. Department of the Interior, National Park Service, integrity is defined as the ability of a property to convey its significance. If the dock was removed, it would diminish the historic integrity of the property, however, the property would retain the ability to convey its significance. Staff recommends approval on the condition that the Commission concludes that no further discussion is needed regarding potential alternatives. The Commission may further discuss potential alternatives to the project as proposed if it so chooses.
Okay, uh, would the client like to make a statement?
Have your attention.
I will.
Uh, William Dyke, uh, one of the partners in the project.
Well, could we have your address?
Oh, twenty twenty-five Gateway Suite one oh one, Fresno. Um, as goes with most historical projects, you get to see them multiple times. Uh, we come through, everybody has ideas, we get involved early in the process and try to figure out what's the best path of travel to navigate, um, what, what the most appropriate course of action is for historic preservation. Um, this issue is something that came up a little bit late in the game, but nonetheless, we did the due diligence. We've seen it before, we came, we met with staff, we looked at the other options, tried to figure out what was the most reasonable way to proceed, um, with an ADA path of travel, if it's a requirement, and ultimately, we concluded that removing the dock is the best way to do it. Again, it's not ideal, of course, um, but that's why you guys get to make the judgment call on these kinds of things. Um, just to reiterate again, um, we've maintained all of the dock along P Street, the major frontage of it, all the dock along the back, which are the, uh, by far the longest, I think they're two hundred and eighty feet each, and all we'd be doing is just taking the sixty feet that's on Enio, matching the State Center Warehouse and other historic resource across the street, which we did the same thing to create the connectivity between the parking lot and the access to the building. So, um, we requested you to approve it, um, we, we've vetted the other options, and nothing viable has, has come forth. So, that's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Any comments from public? Hearing none, bring it back into the Commission. Comments?
I'm glad it's not the section that faces to the main arteries, that this is the Enio, which essentially has a, has a parking lot, you know, a- access, and so I, I know that the compliance is, is, is a priority, so I can understand this, and I, I appreciate, um, having this as an alternative.
I also think that while it is a defining feature, it's not the full extent of the dock-defining feature at the building, and Enio is, um, not as prominent as the other two certainly, and having those preserved, I think is a plus. I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I'm all right with it too, um, the, the rea- I lo- the reason why I like it on the front so much is because it is so long, and it is huge, and if we were able to retain that full feature along that whole side of the building, kind of, um, just because it's so long and linear, it kind of holds a prominence, but whether, you know, if we start cutting it up, it ma- it totally changes what that elevation looks like, so whether it's up four feet or down on grade, we still have that long, linear look on that side of the building, not changing the elevation very much. So while we're removing it, visually, it doesn't work that much different.
I would also concur that we don't need to discuss further alternatives.
No. I'd agree.
So, motion for staff's recommendation?
I'll move that we accept staff's recommendation, um, for, um, the application regarding the dock.
I'll second.
Motion is approved. Thank you. Thank you for working on that, appreciate that. Item number B, letter B?
All right. The owner of the Sunstair Warehouse has requested that their pre-application consisting of conceptual rehabilitation plans be reviewed and comment upon, commented upon by the Commission. The conceptual rehabilitation plans envision a program for the building that includes ground-floor restaurant microbreweries and upper-story office spaces within the Brewery District in downtown Fresno. Conceptual tenant improvements on the facade of the building would entail the existing brickwork, terracotta inlays, and intricate cornices to remain or be restored as needed, replacement of infill within the existing storefronts along the first story with bulkheads, fixed hollow metal glazing, entry doors, awnings, and clear-story windows, and replacement of the existing aluminum windows along the second story with true double-hung windows with energy-efficient glazing that returns the portion of the facade closer to how it or- was originally designed. The central storefront would be recessed behind open grid-pattered fencing that meets the overall setback of the building with a partially recessed and centered metal gated entry. Upon initial review of the pre-application for the Sunstair Warehouse, staff finds that the facade of this commercial building is the primary concern as it consists of the character-defining features of this historic resource that are readily visible from the public right-of-way. The rehabilitation as proposed appears to comply with the Purpose and Facade Design Development Standards as put forth in the Development Code for Downtown Districts and the Secretary, Secretary of the Interior Standards for Rehabilitation. Staff encourages discussion in pursuit of optimal design that enhances and minimi- minimizes any potential adverse effects to the historic character of the property.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Reed, I'm architect at Paul Halagian Architects, three eight nine Clovis Avenue, Suite one hundred. Um, like Laura mentioned, this is a historic warehouse tenant improvement project in the Brewery District, just south of where the Fulton Mall Street conversion just happened. Um, we are very highly focused on keeping the historic character of this building. It's obvious that there's a lot of, um, like she said, intricate cornices on the facade, the, um, the windows have been severely, like, they've been replaced, and at best, it's m- marginal to the, uh, character. So what we're planning on doing is removing those windows, replacing them with a more, um, a more in-character option for that window application, as well as removing all that infill that's been boarded up over the years, and, um, kind of retaining the simplicity of the infill. That way, the historic character of the building really shines. Um, so, we're just asking for, um, kind of co- dialogue or commentary on the pro- like, where we're at in the process, which is schematic design roughly. Um, so we just wanted to see if the awnings that we're proposing, just a very simple, kind of, um, like shed awning over the front, as well as the recessed outdoor dining area, which does comply with the letter of the Downtown Development Code, um, is an applicable fit for this, um, for this project. So what we're planning on doing with that center bay, like, like she mentioned, is recessing the outdoor dining area, which actually activates what's inside the building. So like she said, there's a, it's gonna be primarily B occupancy, which is office space on the top floor, which kind of bleeds into the ground floor a little bit, as well as microbreweries, um, on the first floor as well, with the shared, like, common space amenity, gathering space for events like AROP and beer crawls and things like that. Um, so just supporting the surrounding use in the Brewery District. Um, so we thought that by opening up that middle bay, we're actually activating the street on Fulton and activating what's happening inside, and kind of letting that transparency come out onto the street. Um, along with that, we're kind of hoping to integrate public art into that. So you can see that little clip in the bottom corner is artist, um, local artist, name's Brandon Green, Brandon Greer, sorry, he's, um, done multiple pieces all over the city. He did the horse sculpture at a Shepherd and Sunnyside at Dry Creek Trailhead, um, the gate right there at Broadway Studios, right down the street. So, um, we're hoping to just integrate some sort of statement piece there and keep the rest of the work that we're doing to a minimum, and keep it very simple to highlight what's already there, so.
Where would the statement piece go?
On that gate, so what you're seeing on the rendering right there is just a simple framework that we'd be building, and then Brandon would insert his art on top of that as part of a sculptural element.
Audience, thank you. I see that now. And are the, the, the awnings, are those, are they actually gonna, going to be suspended from chains or cables like that?
It'll be some sort of suspension, yeah, from the top, not from the bottom side.
Structurally can handle, I assume.
Yeah, so there's a, actually a concrete stem wall behind all that brick, so we talked to a structural engineer, he's given us the go-ahead to attach it that way, and it kind of follows the typology that's happening already all along Fulton, where you have the awnings that are supported from above and linear, very simple, so it'll be like a steel channel edge, very clean and not distracting from what's going on.
Black as well?
The clear stories above.
Black as well?
Sorry?
Did you say black for window frames and stuff like that?
It'll be darker, definitely, not a aluminum storefront by any means.
Right. Any other questions for the architect?
I didn't see any in kind of the previous surveys and things, any precedent for awnings on this building. Did you guys find how signage was, was previously done?
Um, I did look at some research from the microfiche data that they had, there was not a whole lot of historic pictures. Um, the building has been surveyed twice, once in nineteen seventy-eight, once in two thousand eight, and, um, both of those had, like, mishmash of infill already, so we couldn't really tell what was originally there. But just going on the typology of the commercial brick industrial building, that's kind of what happened. You have the bulkhead at the bottom, the windows with the entry doors in the middle, and then an awning and clear story. So it kind of follows that same pattern that's historically been applied to this type of building, without knowing exactly what was there before.
My sense, they take away a little bit from the verticality of the rest of the facade.
Mm-hmm.
I don't, I don't want to say that I dislike them, um, and I don't want to tell you what to do in place, but I kind of, my, my sense was, kind of slashing right through there, cause we've got the, the cantillations on the sides, the, the vertical element, and then the windows up above.
It just does help establish a pedestrian scale to it also.
Yes, I understand that.
But it is very tall and kind of blind.
That's, that's why I don't want to say I dislike them, I just am sharing that my sense of kind of what some of the building has to present to the street gets a little chopped up.
David, uh, we've, on buildings like this in, uh, in the past, we've kind of considered the, the, the piercings at street level to be somewhat, um,
Temporary.
Temporary.
Mm-hmm.
So we've, we've, we've had buildings like this come up before, but kind of, and, and most of the time, the restoration of these glau- ground-floor facades have been significantly more tasteful than what's, what's there. But we've also considered them somewhat, um, temporary because they have changed over the course of time, and just like they're being changed now, they can be changed in twenty-five years or so to something, something different without too much negative effect on the whole building.
Yeah, I mean, finding, um, you know, finding original upper-floor facades is, you know, pretty common around here. Finding original storefronts is very rare. Um, and so, yeah, we, if you recall, we just discussed a couple months ago the, uh, mixed-use building on Fresno Street, um, and same story there. The bulk of the facade is in, uh, is in pretty good condition, considering, um, the age of the building and, and the fact that it hadn't been very well maintained, but those, those storefronts were gone, and those are gonna have to be replaced with, with a newer storefront system. But the rest of it was there, kind of the same case, kind of the same case here, that seems to be pretty common. Helm Building also was the same, same thing, there was one original storefront out of maybe a dozen bays, and the rest were gonna have to be kind of recreated with modern materials.
Right. Any other questions from the architect?
Robin asked my questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Like to open it up to the public for comment? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Commission. Comments, questions?
Not for me.
Motion?
This is a discussion item.
Discussion item, no discussion. Any more discussion items?
Do you maybe, um, maybe want to clarify some points taken from discussion to provide to the applicant as they move forward in their design process? Do they wanna, you want them to take away?
I don't know if they're go- necessarily going in a, in a incorrect direction. I would say that they're pretty much on track, and kind of what I was alluding to before, it's, it's, it's consistence with, it's consistent with what we've kind of approved in the past for buildings, uh, that are just like this in downtown. And while some of the, some of the things might be slightly different, that's, I mean, that's the benefit of having a different architect on a different, on a new building, picking up the little details. I think they're, I think they're right on, going in the right direction.
I think overall, it's gonna be an improvement and enhancement in the neighborhood.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I'm understanding.
And having, um, been a part of decisions where property owners wanted to remove, uh, existing awnings, it's good to see a property owner that wants to add awnings, um, because, um, those were certainly consistent with, with these historic properties.
So in future, the awnings would be something that you would still consider? Yeah, okay.
I think we, I think we, tr- traditionally, we look at more awnings, look at the remnants of awnings and have no idea what they look like, and so seeing some pink foot back on there seems to make sense. Okay, good?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Uh, item C, please.
Oh, you got it.
Oh, thank you.
I'll wait for Paul. Okay. Maybe you thought we would've taken longer on those two items.
Get an ice cream?
(laughing) The owner of the Frank Curtain Home has requested that their pre-application consisting of conceptual garage reconstruction plans be reviewed and commented upon by the Commission. The conceptual garage reconstruction plans envision the construction of a new garage elongated on the site of the existing garage that would include a stu- a studio apartment. Conceptual plans would entail demolition of the existing garage, which has tested positive for lead, and construction of a new garage that would include a front gabled roof with composite shingles, simple brackets, and open overhanging eaves with exposed rafter tails, in addition to bevel or dollybarden wood siding with mitre corners to match the existing garage. Finestration would be similar to what is present on the existing garage with four single-hung windows along the north elevation, and the addition of three sets of French doors along the south elevation. The west elevation would include the garage door accessed by the existing driveway along the north property line, and the east elevation would include a barn door to match the exterior siding. Upon initial review of the pre-application for the Frank Curtain Home, staff finds that the rear portion of the property that is visible from the public right-of-way is the primary concern because the subject property is located on a corner parcel. Its substantial alteration could have a potential effect on the overall historic character of the property. The rehabilitation as proposed appears to comply with the site design development standards as put forth in the Development Code for Residential Single Family Districts and the Secretary of the Interior Standards for Reconstruction. Staff encourages discussion in pursuit of optimal design that enhances and minimizes any potential adverse effects to the historic character of the property.
Can you go back to the slide with the demo and the proposed plan? Questions for staff?
Laura, I don't know if you had any discussion, and maybe an owner will step forward in a moment, but is there a plan to, to change the, the fence at the access to the garage? That it's seen more from the right-of-way?
Along the west property line?
Yes.
I do not believe so, but the applicant is present and could clarify that. It's not part of this proposal, anyway. If the Commission would like, I can pull up a street view, if that would help clarify. Oh, wait. Ah. I was fortunate to get internet up today, but it is still being a little cumbersome. Thanks for your patience. So here, on the right, is the main residence, and you can see a portion of the existing garage. Um, in the rear portion of the property, this is, uh, North Linden Avenue, and the, um, main facade of the property faces Floridora Avenue.
Essentially, from the street view, other than the distance from property line, it's essentially gonna look like the same, same facade, just a little bit closer.
It's, um, they are imitating the existing design and materials of, of the garage, they're just elongating it.
Right.
Um, uh, rel- relative to what is existing, major changes include, um, the installation of French doors along, um, the facade you see here facing south.
Do we know what the dimension will be from the, the fence to the new facade? Like, how much closer to the street will it be? Do we, I didn't see it on the plan.
Hmm. It appears that the, uh, the facade of the proposed garage facing Linden Avon- Avenue will be slightly closer, uh, to, uh, North Linden Avenue, um, uh...
Eight or ten feet, if I had to guess, does that sound about right?
Uh, the architect present might be able to, uh, clarify?
Thank you.
Yeah, so we know the dimension.
Uh, it would be about, uh, uh, thirty feet from the street, uh, and it will be, uh, maybe about eight, nine feet clo- closer from the existing, uh, facade.
I always think you're kind of going in both directions, closer to the street and then closer to the property line.
Um, yes, because we, uh, elongated, we added the, uh, the studio in the back, uh, on the, uh, east side of the garage, so, um, uh, so the whole building, um, elongated. Uh, the, uh, the proportions from the west and east side is exactly the same as the existing garage, but, uh, it, uh, it has moved, uh, southward slightly and to gain more, uh, setback from the, uh, property line on the north side. But we wanted to, uh, maintain the character of the original building and the era, so, um, that was the intent of the owners, so, um, we, um, uh, we are going to, um, preserve the details, uh, the original details as much as possible and, uh, stay true to the era of when it was built, maintain the character of the, um, the whole residence.
Are you gonna color match it to the house?
Well, we are still, um, talking about colors.
Okay. That doesn't have to be a thing, I was just asking.
Exactly.
You can change colors. Looks like you're moving it a little to the south, so you're farther from the north property line?
Yes.
I just wanna say, I think this is great.
Okay, thank you.
What a great use of space.
And again, an enhancement is a contributor to the neighborhood.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Comments from the public? Guys are too easy tonight. Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the commission. Comments, questions?
I think this is great. I think they've, you're taking a, a old building that maybe has lost its usefulness, and you're replacing it with something that enhances the existing house and the whole neighborhood. What property owners oughta be doing, so, well done.
And tastefully. Hopefully, it's infectious in the neighborhood, everyone starts doing it.
Laura, does this come back to us?
Yes, this is, uh, a pre-application, so they haven't, um, officially applied for permits yet, so once they do move the project forward, then it would come back through the commission.
And you need approval.
(laughing)
Make a motion, can I entertain a motion?
So, um, also a discussion item, doesn't require action.
I thought you said, okay, sorry.
Um, yeah, so, uh, it sounds like the applicant is on the right track.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay.
Maybe when you come back, can we see the colors?
(laughing)
Just for fun, yeah.
Yeah.
We don't do colors.
Do you have any questions for us? Should've asked that the last time.
Actually, I just have a comment or a question. Uh, as we increase the density in these inner neighborhoods, uh, there's gonna be increased pressure on parking, and I know that, you know, we don't wanna take up valuable space for parking cars on, on the property, but they end up on the streets. And, and that's okay to some extent, although some people experience car burglaries. Uh, but the other thing is that when the street sweeper comes on Thursday, after our cars parked on the street, we lose the benefit of that street sweeping service. And I don't, I'd, I'd like to look, you know, to some an- you know, for some answers ultimately to those kinds of, uh, issues that could arise when we increase the parking pressure in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Yeah, good call. I'll let you guys put that on your list.
(laughing) Duly noted. (laughing) Yeah, we're actually experimenting with some, uh, street sweeping and parking conflict resolution in the Lowell neighborhood that might roll out, um, beyond that if it's successful.
All right, item D, please.
All right. The owner of the George Rydel Miller home has requested that their property located at six one seven East Carmen Avenue be considered for listing in the local register of historic resources. This property consists of a one-story, single-family residence with attached carport and a detached one-car garage constructed in the Craftsman architectural style. It is within the six-block area of Wilson's North Fresno tract, known locally as the Wilson Island. Character-defining features include a low-pitched gabled roof that has open, overhanging eaves with exposed rafter tails, porches, um, in this case, a partial width with, uh, roof supported by a, a square column that, um, extends to the ground level.
Laura, excuse me a second.
Yeah.
Excuse me, could, could I have you guys finish, finish the conversation outside? Sorry, I'm just having a hard time focusing. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Go ahead, thank you.
And, um, one more character-defining feature is, um, it's a one to one and a half-story height. The period of significance identified for this property is nineteen nineteen to nineteen fifty-three, the period during which George Rydel Miller and his wife, Elsie Gertrude Miller, lived in the home. George Rydel Miller, a native of Scotland, arrived at the port of New York City on or about June fifteenth, nineteen oh four, married and was living with his wife, Elsie Gertrude Miller, at six one seven East Carmen Avenue in Fresno, California, by nineteen twenty. This residence was among the first one-third of residences constructed in the six-block area of Wilson's North Fresno tract, known as the Wilson Island, and was constructed by acclaimed building contractor and resident of Fresno, Elmer Jewett, or E.J. Farr. E.J. Farr was born in eighteen sixty-two in New York City and arrived in Fresno, California, in eighteen ninety-seven. He is known for having constructed several homes in Fresno, particularly along Van Ness Avenue, for leading building operations for the Fresno City schools for several years, and for serving as the first president of the Fresno Contractors Association, which later became known as the Fresno Builders Exchange. His residence located at two forty-five North Fulton Street in the Lowell neighborhood is individually listed in the local register of historic resources as historic property number one hundred thirty-nine. He lived there with his family until his death in nineteen forty. The George Rydel Miller home is greater than fifty years of age, retains historic integrity, and meets local register criterion one because it is associated with Fresno's early expansion northward within the Wilson Island of Wilson's North Fresno tract in the Tower District, as well as criterion three because it embodies distinctive characteristics of the Craftsman architectural style and represents the work of a master local builder, E.J. Farr. Because the George Rydel Miller home appears to be eligible for the local register of historic resources, staff recommends that the commission approve the request for designation and forward to city council.
Just to note, this would require a unanimous vote, since we only have four commissioners present.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Hearing none, would the client like to make a statement?
Jeanie?
Excuse me, I just, um, wanna do everything I can to do the home as, um, just save some sound, I'm thankful I, I'm grateful.
Thank you. Thank you.
Amen.
We do, too.
This is one of those ones that you think is already on the register.
Yeah.
You would assume, it's already, you know, on the register.
When I drove by, I just laughed and kept driving.
Well, again, like the last project, hopefully, it's contagious, more in the neighborhood will do it. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, entertain a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
Public comments? Any other public?
Any other public comments? Sorry, I didn't see any. Thank you.
Laura, just real quick, do we do these singly or together?
Um, I framed it so we could evaluate each property on its own. Um, if the commission prefers, we can, um, go through the other one as well. Um, I figured at the interest of time for property owners present, we would, um, you know, do one and then move on to the, to the next one.
Okay.
I'll make the motion that we approve, staff's recommendation for, uh, naming the, uh, the George Rydel Miller home to the local register of historic resources.
One second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you.
We have a Millsack brochure for you.
(laughing) We'll, we'll, we'll take one.
Big time for the neighborhood.
All right, commission ready for the last item? Okay. Um, the owner of the Bixler Vapor Dry Cleaning Company building has requested that their property located at twenty forty-nine Broadway be considered for listing in the local register of historic resources. This property consists of a three-story, commercial industrial building constructed of reinforced concrete with brick infill in the Lowell neighborhood. A one-story caretaker studio was constructed within the rear portion of the rooftop of the building in nineteen forty. The period of significance identified for this property is nineteen twenty to nineteen fifty-six, the estimated period during which the Bixler Vapor Dry Cleaning Company owned and operated the building. This company was founded by William Lincoln, or W.L. Bixler, and his son, L.B. Bixler, in nineteen fourteen. W.L. and his family had arrived in California in eighteen ninety-three from origins in Pennsylvania and Ohio. At the time of W.L.'s death in nineteen thirty-three, L.B. was serving as president of the Fresno Cleaners and Dyers Association and continued to manage the business they had established until at least nineteen fifty-six. Following a period of vacancy, the building was adaptively reused for the Broadway Fair Appliance and Furniture Company by nineteen sixty-nine. Voters of the owners, John Garofoli and Vic Antonino, were frequently featured in a plethora of advertisements promoting Broadway Fair, in addition to a rendering of the building with its recognizable three-story, three-bay facade. Roy Maxwell, or Max, and Vivian Hardison were operating their printing and publishing business, MidCal Publishers, here no later than nineteen seventy-nine. The Hardison family began living on the third floor of the building and operating their business out of the storefront on the north end of the primary or east elevation on the first floor. Steve Hardison, son of Max and Vivian Hardison, currently operates the printing and publishing business. Most of the commercial development within the Lowell neighborhood is located along or adjacent to east of Visadero Street, and most of these properties were constructed between nineteen thirty and nineteen sixty, making the subject property constructed in nineteen twenty one of the earliest commercial buildings constructed in what was and still remains a predominantly residential neighborhood. The building is also located along one, um, it's located one block east of H Street, historically known as an industrial corridor, and it may have contributed to the influence in design. It, it identifies most with the industrial, industrial loft property type with character-defining features that include reinforced concrete construction, at least three stories in height with vertical emphasis, storefronts along the first story, multi-pane steel windows along the upper stories, and generally open floor plans on, on the upper stories. The intention of this property type was to create a factory environment that would provide lighting, ventilation, and protection from fire and vibration within a limited amount of space. The Bixler Vapor Dry Cleaning Company building is, uh, greater than fifty years of age, retains historic integrity, and meets local register criterion one because it is associated with early twentieth-century commercial and industrial development in the Lowell neighborhood in Fresno, as well as criterion three because it has distinction as an industrial, industrial loft property type. Now, um, if you'll bear with me, the, um, uh, applicant also wanted to present their, um, conceptual rehabilitation plans at this meeting as you consider the property for local, for local designation. Um, the current property owners intend to rehabilitate the property while retaining and restoring the historic character of the commercial industrial building with the assistance of the California Historical Building Code and with the opportunity to receive potential relief from City of Fresno property development standards. The owners of the Bixler Vapor Dry Cleaning Company have requested that their, um, conceptual rehabilitation plans be, uh, reviewed and commented on by the commission. These plans envision a fresh look for the building, making use of its good bones toward a clean, modern facility for business and residential uses. Conceptual plans would entail a remodel of the interior, providing three to four spaces for business on the first floor and potentially fourteen to fifteen apartments among the upper floors. With regard to the exterior, the building would be repainted and the existing finestration on the building would remain, however, windows along the upper stories would be replaced with new horizontally-oriented metal windows influenced by the streamlined modern and international architectural styles. These windows would be accented by the installation of balconies made of steel materials. The existing caretaker studio on the rooftop of the building would be reconstructed and expanded and clad in a cement-fiber siding-type product. This space would provide access to the roof, to the roof deck for tenants, and, um, final aspect of the rehab is new signage in the form of a blade sign which would be mounted on the southwest corner of the building. And here are a few slides of, um, design inspirations, uh, submitted by the architect. Upon initial review of the conceptual plans for the building, staff finds that the elevations, um, of the historic resource, the potential historic resource that are readily visible from the public right of way are the primary concern, which include the primary east and side, both north and south elevations. Street-facing elevations include the primary, primary or east elevation which faces east toward Broadway, and the side north elevation which faces north toward East Warman Avenue. The rehabilitation as proposed appears to comply with the Purpose and Facade Design Development Standards as put forth in the Development Code for Downtown Districts. However, in reference to the Secretary of the Interior Standards for Rehabilitation, staff finds that the existing original multi-pane steel windows on the third story of the primary elevation are, and on the second and third stories of the side or north elevation are a prominent character-defining feature of the building, and that the installation of new windows that are inconsistent with their design would diminish the historic integrity of the property. Additionally, if balconies are installed, they should reveal and enhance the window design. A balcony with metal-framed cable railing may be the optimal selection. Staff encourages discussion in pursuit of optimal design that enhances and minimizes any potential adverse effects to the historic character of the property as it is considered for local designation. Staff recommends that the commission approve the request for designation and forward to city council.
Did the, uh, original building ever have balconies on it? On the windows?
I do not believe so. I do not believe so.
Yeah, I would prefer you to do that.
So the reason we combined, um, the consideration for local designation and the review in common is that we thought, um, the intention or plans for the building might influence your decision, um, whether or not, uh, to designate the building. So it's up, but it's up to you how, how to proceed.
But there's no action on the proposed rehabilitation, right?
Right, no action needed.
The only action tonight is the designation, and then this was sort of a preview of the rehabilitation concept as it emerges, and you could, you know, provide feedback on that, but the, the task at hand is whether to designate or not, though.
Um, can you go back to a picture of, of, of the sign? Kind of point that out a little bit better?
The proposed blade sign? I believe it's, um, I think if you see here.
And was that ever, was that a part of the building originally?
I do not believe so. The only historic photos I could find was this, um, and this was on, uh, micro, microfiche in our records department, and this is back when the building, um, was used as the Broadway Fair, um, furniture and appliance warehouse, and you can see, um, it looks like, uh, the signage was painted, um, on this portion of the building, um, and I think there's some signage here, um, along the parapet. You can also see that, um, this, this facade, the windows have been replaced on portions of these facades, but they used to be all, uh, multi-painted steel, steel windows.
Comments, that very little has happened in, in this particular part of Lowell neighborhood in a really long time, and this is a big, this is a big deal. The Neighborhood Association today said that we have no, no available rental properties at all in Lowell now, that everything is, you know, and there's a list of people wanting housing in Lowell, which is a brand-new activity. And so, the addition of, 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 of reuse for this, for additional housing i- is significant. That's a, it's a rough corner, um, in, in many ways because of Broadway liquor across the street, and it's generally referred to as the, the liquor neighborhood, um, down at that end because there's a lot of, of activity, you know, brought there, and so I, I think that first the designation of this building is significant because of its, of its history and its location, uh, what it, what it means down there, it's, um, I, and so I, I really believe that moving this toward designation is also, hopefully, will, will be contagious for other industrial-type buildings like this for adaptive reuse. And so, um, I, I, I think that the designation is a great first step, um, for this, and I really appreciate the property owners, you know, continuing to invest in it and continuing to invest in the neighborhood. So I, I think this is exactly what our commission should be looking at to do in buildings all over Fresno, but particularly south of Shaw.
I, I really appreciate the precedents that, that the architect has cited, the Gropius buildings, the Fagus Factory, those are all right on the money. Um, I think my concern really is, um, I understand with housing, if you're going to turn this into housing, that balconies are a real, uh, amenity. They do, in my opinion, detract from the character of the building, but they're kind of a necessity, so that's a, that's a challenge which takes precedent. Um, the first thing that caught my eye when I looked at the elevations was the bracketing, and I understand you need that bracketing to support those balconies, but all I see is the bracketing. And, and I think the, uh, the cable strut, the, the diagonal strut that's supporting them, um, it, it also seems like, is it, do you, do you need them both? Do you need the bracketing and the cable? Is it a cable or, I'm not sure if it's a rod or a cable, whatever it is. It seems that's, that's out of, to me that is out of character from the simplicity of the balconies that are shown in your precedents, that are just a simple slab with a, you know, almost nonexistent rail. I understand structurally why that's really difficult for you to do, but the brackets are just, they're just killing it, in my opinion.
I agree with-
But I applaud your effort, this is great.
I agree with Paul, that it takes away from the industrial feel.
Does the, uh, client or architect, like, would they like to come up and, and talk about the project?
Um, my name is Andrew Young, and I represent, um, one of the partners, and, uh, this building has a lot of history, both in my family as well. Uh, my business address-
Please leave your address, please.
Is seventy-six thirty-eight North Ingram, Suite one ten. Um, a lot of history, both in my family, uh, Steve Hardison is my father-in-law, and, uh, so it, there's a lot of history here, and, uh, knowing, knowing that, well, I don't know if you can see on the blade sign, we're naming it The Hardison, to bring that history into it as well. Um, and printing is, is a dying breed, uh, because it's all becoming electronic and offset printing isn't there anymore, and so this, uh, is, is exciting for us in that way to be able to bring a source of income as well to the family and, and keep the history going on the building. So we're excited about the project, uh, we see a lot of really great, um, uh, some really great businesses going into the downstairs area, a lot of nonprofits want to come in and work in that area, um, ones that do work in that neighborhood already, um, and, and residential in that area is, is a need. We see it, um, across the board, we're seeing it right now, and so we're excited to be able to, uh, make this, uh, come true, so, yeah. The blade sign also represents, uh, an industrial feel, we, we want to make that, uh, a steel, um, make it out of steel, make it industrial, um, sense to it so that it brings back some of that history. It, you know, we, we don't see a history of it, but we, we think that it, it definitely enhances the building in that way, so, yeah.
Mark, the architect is also here, if you'd like to hear from him as well regarding, um, specifics about the design. I think maybe you were wanting to discuss the balconies further. But it's up to-
What stage are you at on, at this market? It's pretty early, right? You're just conceptual stuff? Okay. And can we have your name and, and address for the record, please?
Mark Andrew with IT Architects, it's fourteen sixty-five North Venice.
I have kind of a philosophical question about enhancing the building. I mean, it's a, this is a, it's an historic, it's a historical, uh, artifact, how do you enhance what was there? I mean, wouldn't, the ideal would be to restore it as if it was, you know, taken back to its original state. That, that doesn't meet the programmatic needs, I understand that, but, and that's why the sign, I think it's a cool sign, but how do you, if, if there wasn't a sign like that there originally, how is adding something that wasn't there originally enhancing the building? That's, I don't know if there's a right or wrong answer, but that's kind of where I'm struggling, struggling with that.
Well, I think we're back to signs being potentially a temporary.
Okay.
Um, if it was designed to reflect the, the character of the original building and could be, you know, at some date, removed without damaging the building, then we, we, just like we said before, approved such things in the past.
Uh, Paul, to your, uh, comment on the cor, on the, on the brackets-
Yeah.
Makes a good point, and my first comment was, can Brian Barkis design this? That is a, that's an entire concrete, uh, beam across there, can we design it with a bolt through with just the cables? And I think that would be a great feature, I think we'd really like to see that as well.
Yeah, I, I think, uh, you, I understa, I'd, I'd prefer that there were no balconies, but you have to have them if you're going to turn into housing, so if you can do what you just described, I think that's a step in the right direction.
Yeah, I too would, uh, say the same thing, because my, the knee-jerk reaction on the, on the balconies was like, huh, we don't do that. You know, with those things in the sign, and one of the beauties of the building is the angle on the street, and we've got this beautiful angle there, something you just don't see locally. When you do see it in other cities, it seems to be such like this magical thing that isn't, isn't done anymore when you have an odd-shaped lot, you know? And so, um, uh, de-
That is the stuff, urban design terms.
Definitely something, and it's, it's really cool. And then the simplicity of it, you know, with the, with the windows and the bays and just, you know, it reminds me of so many of, you know, the industrial buildings down on wharfs and stuff where ships were being built and, you know, back in the thirties and stuff, and just that, that perfect rhythm of the simplicity just kind of marches through the building. And it stands out in a, in a, in a, in a, in an urban space that has so much stuff going on, when you have that just really simple palette of windows and, you know, a painted concrete, it just, it just pops, it's just eye-catching and very striking.
I took a close-up picture of the windows, the original ones that, that are still there, and they are just, it's a cool feature.
Mm-hmm.
So I, um, I think your description, Laura, was that the windows were, did you describe them as, you see it as a vertical bay, or is it more of a horizontal composition? How do you, how did you describe it?
I described it as being more vertically oriented, uh, with the-
Because of the-
With the bays.
Structural frame, is that it? So maybe that's another, I don't know, thing to consider, is if you go back to the, the elevation, the, the drawing? I think the, the, um, the balconies are taking that, that tall, vertical, um, order, structural order, and it's, the horizontal line is fighting it. So what if your balconies were smaller, like in, like in this, this elevation here where there's just this small, little discreet, that, that might help, um, accentuate the vertical, if they're not these long horizontal lines on the facade.
And if the balcony color blended in with the horizontal color to where it didn't, um, offset or contrast, you know?
I think the, yeah, the more you can make those go away and, and kind of see that tall, vertical, um, order, I think that would really help you.
It's, matter of history, the, the building's been occupied continuously, uh, for, um, for a long time, yes, it's still, still occupied.
That's correct.
And, and so, I, I, I appreciate that, a building that's been occupied for so long in, um, in this neighborhood, my neighborhood, um, is, is moving in, in that direction. So I, I think it's an important project.
Are you demolishing a, any part of it?
No.
It's, you're just, uh, um, that stair, that, that stair is new, though, right?
That stair is new.
Yeah.
Or there one steel staircase for the exiting, uh, because so many apartments up there.
Yeah.
You talked about doing the family name painted on the sign?
Well, my hope was to have, um, have some dimensional letters that were backlit so you could see it at nighttime.
Oh, okay.
You know, that would, we'd like to see that on top of, you know, corten steel, so that it would, it would be orange shining through, and anyways, there was some, lots of ideas rolling around to make it. The top of that is a, is an, is an art feature in and of itself, it's, it's dimensional, um, just trying to give it a corner, the corner something to look at, so. We knew that area, this area has a, a little, a little large artistic flow to it, and we wanted to make something pleasing to look at in that sense.
And are there any of the, are any, do you, I can't remember, the facades, is there a painted sign or remnants of a, of painted sign?
You can see, uh, the old Broadway Fair, uh, paint bleeding through, um, up on the top.
Is it possible to save that, or?
Not, no, I don't, I don't think, well, I don't think, it's, it's ve, it's so hard to see it.
Gotcha.
Uh, you, I mean, I just happen to know it because I know that it used to be Broadway, you know, so I, I'd seen the sign up there.
Sure.
Oh, yeah, you can, it's-
Big, huh?
Yeah, it's really faint, on the, on the Broadway elevation, right? So, yeah, you can, let's see, above the-
Oh, yeah, there it is.
Barely there. Can you, can you make it out?
Barely.
Yeah, I mean, it's-
Yeah, that's not enough.
No.
I was thinking it was all like, you know, flaky, but still had that, that hand-painted, you know, look and style to it.
It'd be cool if it said Bixler.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
It could.
The Hardison at the Bixler building, who knows?
Oh, yeah.
Barely.
It was on the Divisero side, I mean, excuse me, on the Broadway side.
Oh.
Yeah, I don't, oh, are you saying you see it there, or on the, on the head, or above the windows on the other side? I thought it was on the other side.
Well, I'm, yeah, I'm seeing it up there.
Yeah, me too. I think it's in the middle somewhere.
Huh.
White model part in there, yeah?
Part of it.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's not enough.
Looks like it's in the middle part.
Am I missing it? Sure, so, in the presentation, I was referring to, um, the existing windows on the third story of the facade and on the second and third stories of the north, um, facade, which are original, and I was recommending, um, that any replacement windows be consistent with that design, as opposed to, um, any, the horizontal windows, like oriented windows that are being considered, kind of for the same reason that Paul said the balconies contribute to that horizont, horizontal, horizontality, um, of the building. I think we really want to emphasize the verticality, um, and try to be consistent with any original features that are on the building.
Originally, when we were working on the, the new windows, uh, we were looking at a product, uh, they're still aluminum, but their, uh, shape is intended to kind of recreate the steel sash look of these windows, but they are two or three times as much as aluminum storefront windows, and so, it's like, oh, it's a great idea, but is it possible because of the cost? So that's why they, on the drawings that, uh, that were submitted, I showed a horizontal aluminum piece as an alternative, it seemed appropriate from the, uh, some of the photographs that I sent, seemed to have that type of window for the look, too. Much that weighs into anyone's decision.
The way we have it broken up now, now, is, is it more of a square, right?
Well, the existing ones are, are smaller pieces in there-
Yeah, yeah.
Based on steel sash, but you can see the horizontal windows in the upper, horizontal lines in the upper, uh, photos.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's kind of the look, uh, proposing. That can be achieved with a, a aluminum storefront, which is in the budget. Uh, aluminum windows trying to recreate the steel sash look are the two or three times the cost, and, uh, I'm not sure that makes them possible, so.
It's interesting looking at the image, because you can see the windows on the first story are horizontally oriented, but actually these upper story windows are multi-painted, um, and they are emphasizing the verticality of, of this portion of the building.
And the next picture, I, I believe, uh, uh-
This one?
Yeah, and, and the top picture there is, you have a, mostly a horizontal look, but the vertical columns create the height on it, where those are, that, that, so I don't know, you know, I mean, they're still broken up vertically and horizontally.
Yeah, we're trying to propose something, uh, appropriate and in budget at the same time.
Yeah, windows are stickler, or were stickler on windows. Um, you know, they were, they were, when the, when you put in those multi-painted sashes, we do it with all the houses, if you've got double hungs, double, double hungs, hungs need to go back in, you know, and changing them up is a significant modification of a character-defining feature of, of a building, and when, when you have a building as simple as yours, but has, you know, you're essentially looking at concrete and glass, the glass and the way that those panes are cut up and broken up- The glass and the way that those panes are cut up and broken up is, is the character defining feature of, of that building and kind of a, it's a, it's a historic, significant historic component of that.
And the way that we have it, uh, drawn on our elevation, the way that it is broken up and cut up like that, does that, is that, does that meet the look everybody's going for? Because they're definitely not the same size as what's on the, we're there now, but it is in a way trying to modify it to make that, make that work. Is that, um, to me, I think it's doing what we're trying to accomplish.
I think, I, did you, what were you seeing that was different Laura? On the, on the window?
On the bottom elevation, uh, the, the width of each, uh, section of glass is still about four feet. But there are horizontal mullions as you can see in there.
Right, the window openings are staying the same, it's just the windows going in are-
Positions within the, each section of glass, I guess you could say. If you go to the photo of the existing building, those are steel sash windows, those units on the right side of that picture for example. They're probably twelve, fourteen inches wide, there's, there's multi-pane, they're all single glaze, it's a steel frame.
You haven't actually laid out unit plans for your residential units, right? So they, um, with the one door, you're, you're showing one door on that balcony, so that, that can only be a, a, like a studio unit, right? It can't be, because a bedroom would need an exit.
I thought that too and, and our, uh, fire, fire department, Byron Beagle said it's a top three A bedroom.
Yes. So a bedroom doesn't need an exit?
Is that the California historical?
You're saying that the window is an escape?
Yeah, I'm just saying, wouldn't you need more doors? You, you'd need a door for your living area and wouldn't you need some kind of a, either an operable window or a door for, as an exit from the bedroom?
That's, that's what I would expect it to and, and he pointed out this fact that it's a type three A building and there's an exception for that. You know, it's still kind of hard to believe.
Yeah.
So what did that, let's get back to the window pane size here, what do we, the existing panes are roughly two by two?
On the drawing right now?
No, existing, in the building.
No, they're, they're probably-
Fifteen by twelve?
Yeah.
Okay, they're taller, they're taller than they are?
You wouldn't want that many storefront mullions, it would, they're so bulky compared to the, to the steel sash, you wouldn't want to do that.
Right, and so, and you're proposing, the dimension that you're proposing for that?
They're four feet wide and about, uh, eighteen inches high maybe, twenty inches high.
It's, uh, all, uh, concrete, it's a complete concrete, poured in place concrete building, there's no brick infills that?
Where it's a concrete block unit, it's, it's twice the size of a block that I've ever seen before.
The, the columns, the columns and the main structure is poured in place concrete with brick infill in some areas. But most of it is poured in place concrete.
And are you going to expose the concrete or paint it or what's the?
Um, I think, I, I, it depends on what's available to us, but there's, I think, most of it's plastered over right now.
Are you going to take the plaster off or are you going to leave it a plastered?
That might be something that would be determined on the cost of doing it.
But your plan right now is just to paint the, paint the building?
The plan was to paint it or, or, yeah. It currently has red tile on the bottom that's porcelain, I don't think that's original. We were trying to find other things that would enhance that back to its original form.
Should we deal with the issue of whether or not to lift it first and then talk about the rest of it?
I would, I would.
Yes.
Staff, you okay with that?
Yeah.
All right. Um, energy and motion?
So moved, I believe it, it's criteria that we-
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, I'd have it. We love your building.
Thank you.
It's awesome.
We're really excited about it, we've been thinking about this for, well, two or three years recently, but we drew some original plans about ten years ago.
Sure.
So, very exciting to see it come in full circle.
There's, it's just, it's a lifetime of going, ooh, what can we do with our cool building?
Well, and, and we want to make it, we, we really care about the historical portion of this and, and we really want to, we want to make it look right as long as it's affordable, you know?
Well, um, we'll definitely, uh, do our best to help you get there, but there are some things that we're going to be hung up on here. Window dimensions being one of them.
And I don't think we have a problem with, uh, you know, extra mullions, I just, like you were saying, the more we put in there, that, it's going to get real blocky, it's going to look, so we just need to find the right product, I think, to make that look right.
That, that line or that pattern or something of that, you know, if it's a, if it's, you know, if it's a very small window, maybe we can go bigger but maybe it's a, a-
Meets the same dimension.
It's the ratio of, of the smaller one that more, so we get that same rhythm. But it's actually something that's doable with, uh, with the system that you're proposing, proposing to do. That way when you remove and replace, unless you're, got your tape measure out, you know, when you're walking by, you probably wouldn't recognize it.
Right.
Don will be watching, so he'll be like-
Oh, he's just going to have binoculars because right from your front porch, you're going to be watching it.
Yeah.
So is it the commission's recommendation that the applicant continue to look at window designs and the extension balcony designs?
Railings?
Railings.
Yes. Yeah, so I think our two big hangups was the size and the, uh, dominance of those balcony features.
Do we need to know more about the blade sign or are we good on the blade sign? I think that the character of it is, is right for this period, um, are we okay with the blade sign?
I, I don't have a problem with it.
I don't have a problem with it either, I think it's, you know, like you, like we've been kind of discussing on some of the other features, it's the home that we even have on there, it's the home that we even move. Lighting and all that stuff, I think it's very- Yeah, so balconies in the, in the, you know, in the, in the window dimension sizes, work on that to get that little bit more original size, scale, something like that.
Go back to us.
And, and reduce the, the balconies there. And again, we're going to basically making this, that, that, the simplicity of this existing building really kind of pop. And see if we can work in those other features without, with, you know, obviously we're going to notice them, they're going to be cool, but they're not going to be the dominant feature of the facade of this building. Anything else?
Maybe, maybe the color, I don't know, it, we don't really, do we weigh in on color? Do we care about the color?
No, because the color's always been a thing that you can, you can change, you know?
So these-
They had to have it purple, they could make it purple but it could go back to cream at any given time.
Some of our original thoughts was a dark gray, light gray and an orange accent, um-
Appears to be consistent with what currently exists on the building.
The columns, giving it some linear with the darker or with a, a different color to help get the height of that. I, I real- the bottom picture is the one that caught my eye the most, that's the one I fell in love with originally. Um, would you be opposed to just throwing it out there? Do you see how these windows have different dimensions? Would that not work with this, is that too modern? Okay, I'm just asking.
Yeah.
Because that's really cool, but maybe not on this one.
I, I don't know, I think we could have that discuss, I think we could have that discussion. You're not going to replace that, you're not going to replace, if you're not going to replace the steel sash window, then why try to, you know, get close? Why not just do something different?
Yeah.
The, I, I think there's some wisdom in what you're suggesting, myself.
I like the playfulness of it.
I appreciate that. And maybe instead of red porcelain, it becomes gray porcelain.
I do too, but we just, I get back to that historic component. Like an ar- like an architectural thing, yeah, but when, you know, for-
But would it attract from the historic integrity of the building?
But how is, how is an aluminum storefront any more in, you know, have any more integrity than, than something that's, you know, random or seemingly random? I think once you say, okay, we're okay, we're, we're okay with not replacing like for like, then it opens up the, and if we're okay with putting a balcony on, then we're, we're opened up to some other ideas. And why not say it's a historic building that has some contemporary interventions to, you know, make it relevant today?
But do you still recognize this building as a historic building?
Well, all right, so go back to, if you go back to, um, the building with those, with the narrow balcony, I forget, is that the- Early Bauhaus, the first Bauhaus building, I think, that one?
Yeah.
So if you, um, I think if you look at the facade where those, um, balconies are, is, they're, they're- It's not just a, you know, a square window, the window is different than the door. And, and so you could make the argument that in that period, um, the whole notion of form following function, right? Uh, instead of just being a ubiquitous opening with some vertical lines in it, the window responds to how, how it's being used. There's a door and the proportion is different than the, than the window. So I think you could make the argument that in that style, there is this kind of randomness.
Well, and Paul, even on the bottom set of windows, you see the five there, the two upper windows are horizontal and the bottom one is too smaller and too larger on the right.
Yeah, right.
I just noticed that right now.
Would you mind coming back with two or three studies?
I would love to.
To show, you know?
Yeah.
What, show a more, what you've already shown, maybe with, uh, some refinement and maybe what you're proposing and let's have the discussion.
I'd, I'd have to see, I mean, for, for so many years we've gone, you know, windows have been such a thing, you know? We, again, you know, if we had double hung, double hung had to go back, you know? I understand that, you know, we've been trying to, you know, if, if a character, if windows are the, are one of the major character defining, defining features, we've always tried to stick fairly close to it. If we, my, my thought would be if we went, like I like the other windows, I think they're completely cool. Someone's going to look at that and go, those windows are so awesome, this is historic, this is a historic building, those windows must have been historic. Because they, they are that poppy and that kind of cool, but they will actually not be-
The minute you take the steel sash out and put something else in that's not steel sash, you've opened the Pandora's box.
Okay.
Or windows. Pandora's architectural box.
All right, let's see them. Anything else?
Nice project.
Thank you.
Steel sash windows.
We leave you with him like that.
We leave you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, item number seven, the chairperson's report, unscheduled items, number eight, members of the commission, any unscheduled items?
I have one little thing, um, when I came on the commission and to date, I have lived in a county island. We will be moving and I believe it was three, Laura, did you look into that? We were allowed three county commish- county resident commissioners as opposed to in the city. And I am moving, um, in about a month to a city property. So if anyone knows someone, if we want to expand the commission, um, in some of those county islands, I think this opens up a seat.
Oh, good call.
I don't, I don't know that we're at, anymore at max anyway.
Well, we're at max anyway, but-
Are we? Because when I came on, we were.
We have seven.
We have seven.
Okay, okay.
But it's nice to have that flexibility in case.
Yeah, just so you know.
So, where are you moving?
Um, west of Figard Loop, not far.
Oh, well, maybe, you're golden now.
I, it's probably at, it's probably at the time of appointment, I, I have, because I have trouble believing.
Yeah, I'm saying-
I'll look, we'll look that up from legal standpoint, but I'm, I doubt that, that a few commission members exercised it. It'd probably be unconstitutional because it would probably be considered interfering with your ability.
Well, I have a deep personal problem if you live in Clovis.
Isn't it kind of like being on the Raiders but playing for the Niners or something?
We, we've had commissioners who lived in Clovis, Joe Moore lived in Clovis and, um, and I was the dissenting voice in the council vote. And had to have a private conversation with the mayor concerning that, um, because I, I thought we were opening ourselves to all kinds of people. People from Clovis can, yeah, and so Joe Moore lived in Clovis during this time here.
I can get a P O box in Fresno if that helps.
Yeah, I, I think for the most part it's, a lot of those, we'll have to, we'll look that up because a lot of things have been overruled. Like in our charter, for example, it says that the city manager, uh, has to live in the city. That was ruled unconstitutional, so we can't have that. So the only, the only residency restrictions that I know of that have been upheld have been council member and mayor. I don't know if any of the others are in effect, but we'll look that up because that's a good point, we've got two, um, two residence changes.
Also Christina, well, it's not a residence change, but I believe Christina lives-
She does not live in the city.
Yeah, she lives, yeah.
Yep, there was a council action to open the commissions up to people who did not live within the city limits of Fresno, so, uh, during the, the Swearingen administration, so, um, it was, it was a big deal, you know?
Well, I replaced Lisa Wolf.
Yeah, who lived in Old Fig. Yeah, and Joe Moore lived in Clovis. And it actually, the mayor took that to counsel the cause to, to be able to appoint Joe Moore, um, to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Yeah, I say no one- I say no one resigns till we get the next mayor and then it's a lot easier.
We don't know that.
Right, we don't.
Any other unscheduled items, commission? None staff unscheduled items?
Um, just a few updates, uh, as you can see, we have some new promotional materials for our economic incentive program. Those are also posted on our recently refreshed website as well, don't know if anyone's seen it. Um, and on our website, we also have a link to our new interactive database. There's a link to it here under the database tab and this is what you see when you open it up. Um, so you can click on, um, the property with a dot on it and you'll get, um, some information about the property. This is just a start, but we hope it's, um, a good step forward in, um, making our data more accessible to the public.
I sent someone here the other day and I hadn't realized it was up yet, I think it was a little foreign, and she was like, oh, I just went on there and clicked on my dot. Of course you did, I knew that.
Um, it's kind of neat, um, so in related to that, this is, part of this effort is also towards maintenance monitoring. Um, we have our quarterly meeting coming up on the twenty ninth, so I believe Paul will be there and Dawn and Christina. So I'll let you know next month what, what comes of it.
Who else comes?
And that's all I have.
The big, big one is getting fired, is that one, right? Do we have a representative from fire coming?
Uh, Byron, Byron, um, he's included in our loop. If, if he isn't able to be there, he does let me know if there are any updates regarding properties on our watch list. Um, we also have a representative from police as well, um, it's, uh, Alfonso Castillo. But, that's all I have.
Could I back up to? That, uh, again, um, getting, uh, reports from people that, um, the houses in Old Armenian Town are open and, uh, people are, are having access to them through the windows and the doors. This afternoon, the windows were open, uh, on most of the houses in Old Armenian Town. And so, um, those are, are ripe for fire, um, and, um, they're definitely not secured. So, until the city takes action on those properties, they remain at risk. And even after that, they remain at risk.
Since we brought up that, any news on the district?
Um, no. Um, we, we have had some, some meetings and I, I, I understand there's been some discussion, uh, about the homes. Uh, I don't think we have a full-blown proposal, whether it be just for the homes or do you want the entire thing? But both of those option, both of those have been discussed. So I, I think there's a little bit more pressure and, and attention to the issue. Um, but I can't say that there's been any tangible, uh, progress at this point.
Is, is the council in, sort of in violation of their own ordinance that if an agenda item is brought up, that they're obligated to address that agenda item within a certain amount of time?
I don't think anything's out of, um, compliance, um.
We're at the two-year point that it was on the agenda.
Yeah, I, I don't know if we've specifically looked into that issue. I don't, I don't believe that there, I, I think that they have flexibility to, to move forward, but I'll, I'll look that up and see if I can get a tangible legal answer for you, um, as far as whether there is a deadline, cause I would hate to be out of, or at least not have advised, I can't make anybody do anything, but at least not, not have advised, uh, of that. So I'll, I'll add that to my list. And we'll get back with some, some, probably a confidential memo on that issue.
Any comments from general public? Nothing? All right. Next meeting, June twenty fourth? Thank you.
And you drop me off at my house.
What's that?
And you drop me off at my house.
Yeah.